The January 25th, 2021 Select Board Meeting. This Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. The meeting is being recorded, live streamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, which will be on Comcast 98 or Verizon 23 and on ECAT's website at www.eastancat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or comment, you can email Michael Blanchard, M. Blanchard, at easton.m a.us, or you can pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom Portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to invite each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Doug King.
Mark Lamb.
And I'm Dottie Full Genetti. So, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda today is a public hearing for the transfer of a Section 15 Off Premises All Alcoholic Beverage License. Craig, do you want to read the hearing notice, please?
The Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to consider and act upon the application of PMB Hennessy's Corporation for a transfer of a Section 15 Off Premises All Alcoholic Beverage License from Padell Incorporated to PMB Hennessy's Corporation doing business as Hennessy's Liquors for premises situated at 589 Washington Street, Easton, with a plan on file at the Select Board's office. Instructions for accessing this remote hearing will be provided on the meeting agenda available on the town of Easton's website at least 48 hours prior to the start of the hearing.
Thanks, Craig. So, the applicant Meyer Patel of PMB Hennessy's Corporation is requesting the transfer of a Section 15 Off Premises Package Store All Alcoholic Beverage License. In our packet, we have the notice of the hearing application and other related documents. The application's been circulated to town departments for comment, and there were no concerns. We have the applicant here and just looking around on the screen.
This is Attorney John Meridian. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, John. Yes, we can hear you.
Sure.
And the applicant is Mr. Patel?
Yep. My, are you there? You might be on mute.
Yes, I'm here. So, how are you?
Hello. So, if you'd want to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about what you're doing, and it looks like you're new to Easton. So, it's a good opportunity for you to tell the people at home your interest in doing business in Easton.
Yes, Ms. My name is Mayur. Last name is Patel. I live in a Brently. My address is 60 Stone Crest Drive, Brently, Massachusetts. I have a liquor store in Randolph. His name is Colonial Liquors. And I've been there eight years. I have experience. And I have my brother and my family coming from India very soon. So, I tried to buy the business and open the Easton. And we have an eight-year experience, and I never have any problem for ABCC, so.
And how long have you had your business in Randolph?
Randolph, I have eight years.
Oh, great. Okay. Any questions from the board? Craig?
And I'm just welcoming Mr. Patel to Easton.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Patel. This is Charles King. You said you have a good record. That means in Randolph, you didn't have any violations that were brought before boards?
No, I don't have any violation. I have a starting couple of years ago, I have a means warning because my have a new employee and he just he don't know means and he give just the one. That's it. Yeah.
If this goes forward, Doc, Connor, and Attorney Meridian, how soon will it be that the management would actually change?
So typically, after the local licensing authority, the Select Board votes to approve this. That paperwork then gets sent by our office to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission of the state. I don't know what their process looks like during COVID, but usually, I believe, an attorney or any, and correct me if you're experienced different, but about within 30 days typically, they'll give an approval.
Yeah, so this this transfer is contingent upon, obviously, the local board's approval and the ABCC. You know, there are three requests before you. The transfer of the license, approval of Meyer Patel as the manager of record, and a pledge of the license and inventory to Rockland Trust Company as they're financing the transaction. It's taken the ABCC right now roughly four to six weeks to issue the approval. Once we get the approval emailed to us and to the board, we then set up a closing. So, I anticipate, you know, hopefully, end of February, early March as a transfer date.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I'm Mark. Good luck. So. Mr. Patel, I'd like to just ask you, you know, you mentioned that you did have a warning before. We're a college town, and we take, you know, very seriously the liquor laws. We do have compliance checks during the year. They will be posted in the paper in advance. And we really strongly recommend that your employees are all trained. I'm wondering what your training process is for your employees.
Yes, Ms. I have three years. Every three years, we have a program to go classes to approve that when I apply the license, he asked me my record for last three years, PP certified classes. And I have ID check machine and everything. So, right now, I'm his full competence.
Terrific. Usually, when there is a compliance issue, it's because there was somebody new that wasn't trained or things like that. So, it sounds like you've been through that before. We don't, it's not pleasant for us when this happens because we're a very business-friendly community, and we don't like to put sanctions on any of our businesses. So, we appreciate that you won't want to come before us because we don't enjoy having those hearings either. So, with that, if there's nothing else, Connor, I would take a motion to transfer a Section 15 Off Premises Alcoholic Beverage License from Padell Incorporated to PMB Hennessy's Corporation doing business as Hennessy's Liquors, 589 Washington Street, Easton, Mass.
Don't move, Barger.
Second, Brusart.
So, that's Barger Brusart and Craig, roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So, congratulations. Good luck with the ABCC, and thank you for choosing Easton to do your business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good luck.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing with Massachusetts Electric Company. Craig, if you want to read that public hearing notice?
Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, January 25th, 2021, 6:00 PM to consider and act on petition of National Grid to remove one SO pole on Porter Street, beginning at a point approximately 19 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Depot Street and Porter Street in accordance with the petition for Plan Number 29757430, dated December 15th, 2020, as shown on file with the Select Board's office.
Thanks, Craig. So, we have in our packet this attached notice of hearing that Craig just read, and an application submitted by National Grid to remove one SO pole on Porter Street, beginning at a point approximately 19 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Depot and Porter Street. The DPW Director, David Field, has reviewed the application and has no objections to the plan as submitted. And I believe that the abutters had all been notified of this hearing as well. So, we have Nick Brown, I assume, is from National Grid.
Hello. Can you hear me all right?
Hi, Nick. We can hear you.
Hi. I'm with TRC Companies, representing National Grid for the electric design on this project.
Okay, terrific. Does anyone have any questions about this project?
Sure. I have a couple, Dottie. It's all right. One is, what is an SO pole?
That is a sole-owned pole owned only by National Grid as opposed to a J O pole, which would be a joint-owned pole owned by National Grid and the telephone company, Verizon, usually.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The second question is, can you tell us why you're removing this pole?
So, this is part of a project for DOT Project Number 607217. The road for Depot Street is being widened in this project from my sketches, and the intersection of Center Street and Depot Street, as well as the intersection at Depot Street and Porter Street is being changed significantly. So, this pole would end up being in the middle of Porter Street on the DOT's redesign of the roads. So, it has to be removed.
Thank you.
Connor, Connor, is this down where the monument is?
Yes, it's right across from monument. So, this is, I mean, it's pole removal. It's not really housekeeping, but in the scale of this project, it's housekeeping to get this pole out of the way for the Depot Street tip job that's going to start this spring. It's going to be the $10 million renovation and widening sidewalks, some intersection straightening, all sorts of good stuff on Depot Street, starting on Washington down the New World Circle. And this is one small part of that.
Great. Any questions?
None. Thank you.
Chuck?
No, thanks.
None. Thank you.
Okay, then I would take a motion for the pole petition for Mass. Electric Company and Verizon, the pole petition hearing at the intersection of Depot. What is the actual vote that we're taking, Connor? Is it to approve the application?
It's written in the paperwork. I will find it one moment. It is hereby ordered and that's the nearby location. So, if you go to page 30 of your packet in the petition for pole locations submitted by Mass. Electric Company.
Okay.
The standard language that comes with these applications actually speaks to permission being granted for location to erect and maintain poles and wires. I would I will revise that verbally. If the board would like to move, as I iterate, then you can do so. So.
It will be a motion to remove one SO, one SO National Grid pole on Porter Street for the DOT project?
That will suffice. You don't need me. There you go.
Move, Barger.
Again, Brusart.
Barger Brusart. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So, thank you, Nick Brown, for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is an acceptance of a resignation, Shereen Glover for the Green Communities Committee, effective January 19th. Shereen has, if you remember, she was just recently appointed to fill a spot on the Finance Committee. So, she's resigned from Green Communities. We really appreciate the contributions that she's done with the Green Communities and are grateful that she has moved to another committee, so still involved. So, we want to thank her for her service there. And if somebody would like to make a motion at a second to accept that, and then it's a roll call vote.
Move, Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Barger Brusart.
Barger, yes.
Brusart Glover?
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Glover.
And Full Genetti Glover. So, thank you very much, Shereen, for your work there. Next is an acceptance of a vote to accept a gift to the Fire Department by Follin Waterproofing and Construction Company. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, or it feels like a couple of weeks ago, we took a vote to accept a gift from Follin for the police, the police department. So, they have, they had also given a $500 American Express gift card donated for the Fire Department, and we're very grateful for that and for their generosity and support of our public services. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept the gift.
Don't move, Barger.
Second, we start with appreciation.
Barger Brusart. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. All right. Next is a discussion and a vote on acceptance of a gift of land to the Conservation Commission, 122 R. Highland Street, map 13R, parcel 11B. Connor, do you want to give us a little background on this?
So, attached in your packet there is a memo from Andrea Langhauser, our Assistant Planning Director and Environmental Planner, Staff to the Conservation Commission, requesting that the board vote to accept the gift of land as described in your packet. This is a six and a quarter acre parcel of mostly wetland that is in the area of critical environmental concern. It was required as part of a Conservation Commission permit issued a few years back for a development to be gifted to the town for preservation and protection of the quality and quantity of groundwater, because it is also over sensitive wetland resources and groundwater recharging resources. The Commission, Conservation Commission, voted just before Christmas to accept the property. It's been reviewed by council and the collector's office, and it is ready for the board to vote to accept it, which I recommend you do as is typical. And I think moving forward, we'll do this always as we've included the assessor's property card in your packet, because one of the questions that always comes up is what is the value of this land and what's the opportunity cost on taxation? It's very marginal, the value of land, because it's mostly not developable, is $62,000. So, that annual tax bill would be minimal.
Any questions from the board?
Looking at the map, there was a significant amount of wetlands in that area.
Yes, yeah. And that is one of the benefits here is that you can see on the map that has been provided is a fertile pool and wetlands area. So, not only environmentally sensitive from a wildlife perspective, but again, for our groundwater and drinking water protection.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept the gift of land to the Conservation Commission at 122 R. Highland Street, Easton, Mass., map 13R, parcel 11B.
Don't move, Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Barger Brusart.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Okay, next is Roosevelt Circle discontinuance to authorize the chair to sign a conveyance deed on behalf of the Select Board.
Sure. So, attached in your packet, you will find a memo from Planning Director Stephanie Danielson regarding the discontinuance of Roosevelt Circle. This is actually to effectuate a vote of town meeting from many years ago in 2009. Town meeting voted to discontinue Roosevelt Circle as a public way to authorize the Select Board to convey the town's title and interest of a discontinued portion as part of the Queeset Smart Growth 40R Overlay District with Dunking Developers. This is admittedly housekeeping that fell through the cracks about 10 years ago. That was brought to our attention recently, and Stephanie has been kind enough to pull the deeds and all the plan information together, as well as minutes of town meeting to demonstrate the intent of a vote of town meeting. And now she is requesting, and I am recommending, that the board vote to authorize Dottie as chair to sign the conveyance deed on behalf of the board.
Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry. I don't have any comments or questions on this specific piece, but I do, it has been a while since we've had an update, I feel, about this project overall. So, maybe just in the future, if there could be an update on how Mr. King is doing over at that project and the progress being made, that might be helpful.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. I'll circle up with Stephanie, and we'll bring something forward in the next couple of months before April.
Yeah, of course, if, Dottie, if that's okay, at some point.
Oh, absolutely. All right. Terrific. If somebody would like to make a motion to authorize me to sign the conveyance deed on behalf of the Select Board for Roosevelt Circle.
Don't move, Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Barger Brusart.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Okay, and next up is the standing COVID update.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. Let me pull up my screen. Feels like a very long time since two weeks ago. I guess we've been very busy, but as has been our practice. Since March of last year, I provide the board and the public with a standing update about the situation as it pertains to COVID in Easton, as well as the information that myself and the emergency management team are keeping an eye on to inform the decisions that we are making. So, we continue to be very frequently and be in touch as a full emergency management team twice a week with the Health Director, Fire Chief, and I on the phone pretty much every day of the week at this point as we start heading into the vaccination phase.
I'm going to need a smaller font or another page pretty soon on that.
I know. Sorry. So, as is typical, we'll just take a look at COVID in the United States, Massachusetts, and then Easton, and then we'll talk about what I think most people are interested in at this point, which is vaccines. So, as of today, the United States remains the epicenter of the pandemic. We have passed 25 million cumulative cases. We are nearing 420,000 cumulative deaths. The positive news here, or I suppose silver lining here, is that daily cases and daily deaths on a seven-day rolling average basis are declining, although they're still extraordinarily high. The percent positive rate is down slightly as well, just hovering around 12%, which is still very high. This is a visualization of that information. So, cases in the United States, as of the past couple of weeks, have begun trending downward after peaking in early January following the holiday seasons. The current rolling seven-day average is about 170,000 cases of coronavirus being confirmed in the United States every day. We peaked at over 200,000 a day on average during holidays. Hospitalizations for a first time in many, many, many weeks have begun to decline. So, they peaked over 130,000 folks in a hospital a few weeks back. We are now at about 116,000 in a hospital. So, as this was the graph last we met, two weeks ago, so you were looking at nearly a quarter million cases a day on average, and now we're at 170. So, again, still too many, but obviously a significant improvement. Risk levels in the United States are also trending in a better direction, although, as you could tell, the vast majority of this map, which consolidates information based on three metrics, which is daily new cases, the infection test positive rate, and the actual infection rate itself is still quite high in the United States. But if you look at two weeks ago, there was a lot more dark, dark red. States are beginning to move a little bit down towards red and orange.
And Connor, is that because we think that the rush or the confirmation spike from November is Thanksgiving was somewhat, is somewhat passing, and that Christmas, at least from a lot of the evidence that I've seen from what I have access to, was thankfully not as bad as Thanksgiving, and that we're coming off that particular case rate?
So, I don't have any ability to kind of quantify whether Christmas was as bad as Thanksgiving or not, except to deduce the same that you are, which is that it didn't, I guess, from a percentage standpoint, triple like it did after Thanksgiving. But I think some of it is just as the holidays have passed, right? Those were the highest-risk activities occurring around the country mostly. So, it seems that some of that subsiding of spread is really just due to people's behavior, not any kind of major breakthrough in better mask adherence or vaccine uptake, to my knowledge, because vaccine rollout has obviously been slow.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. We're closely monitoring the inverse relationship between incremental vaccine increases. And then, in theory, hopefully, the defined of the cases. Although it'll be interesting how they quantify it, because technically, you can still be positive even though you've had the vaccine, I believe.
Yes, because you don't get the kind of 90-plus percent efficacy immunity conveyed in that first shot. So, it's not uncommon, and you've seen reports of particularly people in Phase 1 getting their first shot, and then that week testing positive, which is a real shame. They made it that far. But once both shots have been administered, and it's been fully kind of incorporated into your immune system, the resistance is quite high. But obviously, we don't have the longitudinal data to see that yet, but we will.
Right. I'm sorry. I think I may not have explained it right. I believe you can have both shots, and what it does is your immune system responds once you've become infected. But you still can become infected, and therefore, you would test positive. It's just that you wouldn't fall ill because your body has the ability to fight it. Does that make sense?
It does. You sound like you know more about it than I do, so I can't. I can't comment on if that is the exact way that it would work.
Understood.
So, moving into Massachusetts, we are looking at 475,000, give or take, cumulative cases and nearing 14,000 total deaths. The 14-day average daily incidence per 100,000 is at 75 and a half. The same biweekly average percent positive rate is just below 7. Similar to what you saw with the United States trend is that in Massachusetts, thankfully, that's that rolling average of daily new cases is beginning to decline. They're still significantly higher than we were before Thanksgiving and holiday seasons. But again, similar to the United States, our hospitalization level in Massachusetts has finally started to dip downward again, which is good news. There's obviously a lot of progress left to make. But when we last spoke, two weeks ago, there was more than 2,200 residents in Massachusetts in the hospital of coronavirus. That's now at about 1946. So, hopefully, that trend continues.
Connor, it's good that the trend is down, but people need to remember that it's still a very, very dangerous situation, and that people should keep, you know, wear masks and do whatever they need to do in order to try to prevent themselves from getting sick or passing it on to someone else.
Absolutely. It's still, you know, recency bias is a real threat. People's burnout is a real threat. I mean, so we are comparatively better than we were two weeks ago, but that is still worse than almost every week yet, except for two weeks ago. Right? So, these numbers still are many, many, many multiples higher than what we were seeing around Labor Day or October. So, I always find that a kind of helpful metric for myself when I'm thinking, you know, am I going to do a certain activity? And I think like, well, I didn't do that in August, and there was one twentieth, the amount of spread at that time. So, but just because we've all been kind of worn out by this naturally, I think people may say, oh, it's improving, you know, therefore, safe. But your point's well taken, Craig, and it's correct. So, here in Easton, and this map, I guess, visualizes your point. The risk level is still red, which is considered high risk for transmission, as is nearly everyone around us, which has been the case for weeks now. So, Easton is circled in blue. This was two weeks ago. Very little change. You know, the Bristol County area, Bristol and Plymouth Counties in particular, are just an ocean of red. Easton's cumulative cases, we are at 1,279 cases. You were at 1,023, your last meeting. And we, towards the end of calendar year, had lost 48 of our residents to coronavirus. So, thankfully, you know, the similar trend, as we just noted with the United States and Massachusetts, we are seeing, although it's only one week, it's not enough really to intelligently call a trend. But we appear to have peaked last week with our biweekly case growth nearly 302 weeks, and that is beginning to dip downward. Although, again, Craig, to your point, it is still significantly higher than it has been at almost any other point. So, the risk of spread is still elevated, and people still need to take the precautions they know they need to take with masking and distancing and avoiding unnecessary outings and gatherings. So, this is our test positive rate. It has begun to decline. We peaked over 10% a couple of weeks ago for the first and hopefully only time, but obviously, we can't guarantee that. The state average is 6.85%, and we are hovering just above 7 and a half. So, Easton's test positive rate is slightly above the state average. Stonehill has returned, or they are in the process of returning students to school. So, it will be interesting to see if that kind of wholesale testing operation has the same impact for the spring semester for Easton's test positive rate as it did in the fall, which is to effectively subsidize our positivity rate because they have ongoing asymptomatic surveillance testing. So, hopefully, we continue to see our test positive rate decline, although it may be artificially accelerated because of Stonehill's operation. Although it may be artificially accelerated because of Stonehill's operation, kind of putting that out there in the interest of transparency as we did in the fall, when we said, well, we're going to see case positive rate go up. Not just because of holiday travel, because we're losing Stonehill's asymptomatic surveillance testing, the inverse. It seems reasonable, maybe true. So if you know, our our positive rate drops to 2% in a couple of weeks, that should not be construed necessarily without the context of digging a little deeper into the data, which I will, of course, do and and contextualize. So we are to Dottie's point, running out of room on our slides. The font is getting smaller and smaller. So our biweekly growth, it has declined from the peak. The report on the 14th, we had 276 new cases in a two week period, which is enormous. It was regular over summer and into the fall before Thanksgiving that we would have 19 or 20 or 30. So really an increase of tenfold. That has begun declining again, hopefully that is a trend, but it's only one data point. So we can't call it that yet. We had 253 new cases of the most recent two week period. Which is a decrease from 276 and our test positive rate, 7.8%, which is a decrease from over 10. So we are above the state average in both those areas right now. And hopefully that just really reinforces for people that they continue doing the things that they need to do. Obviously there is hope on the way with a vaccine that will take quite some time to roll out and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And even for folks who are in phase one, medical providers, first responders. The the existing guidance right now is not you get your first shot, you rip your mask off, throw it in the garbage and never think about it again. It is that you continue to do those things because to Tom's point, Tommy, we send a more declarative than I am comfortable being for myself, but my understanding is is similar to yours that the vaccine, what we do know is it prevents the disease of COVID-19, but not necessarily. It is it the data is not necessarily there for us to make a determination on whether that means you can't contract the coronavirus that brings with that disease and therefore it's not entirely known whether being vaccinated means you can't carry and or transmit asymptomatic.
And I think that's the concern is whether or not you you can still transmit. And I think a lot of the I think that what I agree, being sensitive to not trying to give advice at all, but I think that when I've raised sound recommendations that it's important even after you've been vaccinated to continue to wear a mask as that's safest route to as we try to understand what the transmissibility is of vaccinated people in still giving it to other people. So most of the reading that I've seen really advocates to your and Craig's point, the continued use of a mask even after you've been vaccinated.
That's right. Yeah. So we're we're I have read the same. So that is the the current guidance, even if you're one of those early groups that's in phase one. You know, I hope still have a little bit of patience with masking left in you yet, because it's going to take some time before health authorities, public health bodies and experts have enough data to make a determination on whether that can be changed. So things will continue changing, I'd imagine quite a bit in the next few months. So before moving into vaccine portion of my update, just a reminder again to everyone, please, you know, wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance. Don't share food. You know, if you're not feeling well, don't go to work and get yourself tested. So vaccines. Some of this information came out today. So just some of it may be a recap from two weeks ago, but I'll try and cover this efficiently. So phasing, the timing and and the groups who are eligible to receive a vaccine is determined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Commonwealth, like most states are basing that off of some recommendations from the CDC, but the graphics you see of, you know, when can I get a COVID vaccine? That's not a town by town decision. That is determined by the Department of Public Health and the governor's administration. The actual channels through which those vaccines are distributed, whether that would be a pharmacy, a municipality or a hospital is kind of subgroup contingent contingent in context contingent. And it depends on what the Department of Public Health can make available for those vaccines. The role of municipalities like Eastern is is not set in stone. And we continue to be in touch with DPH to learn more about expanding our opportunities to provide vaccines to more groups. The timeframes here are estimates. They mean it when they say subject to change. I think this is the fourth or fifth time in 10 days that this has changed. Today, individuals 65 and and above were moved to priority two in phase two. And that is again, a fourth or fifth change in in two weeks. So please, the official information on this is mass.gov/covidvaccine. I can't stress enough that particularly of social media and with the desire of many understandably to get a vaccine, the instant it's available, there's not always fully accurate information being shared. The best best way to get the straight to the source is to go to the source, which is the Commonwealth. So go to mass.gov/covidvaccine.
I'd also add, Connor, you know, I some of the people that I talked to are saying that they don't know how comfortable they feel getting a vaccine right away when it first comes out. And what I would just say is call your doctor and and get the facts. Don't don't listen to social media, don't listen to other people. Get the facts directly from the medical experts. It depends on, you know, your situation, your health, your medical status. And you know, that's, I think, the best way to do it. If my doctor says that I'm good to get the shot, I'm getting the shot. So I think that that's just helpful advice, but there's a lot of rumors going around. There was an article in the Boston Globe today and in the Enterprise today. There there are a lot of rumors going around and that creates a lot of fear in people. So best to listen to the experts, not social media.
That's that's is is absolutely true and is is very sound advice. And we brought this up the last presentation and we should every time is that the notice that people are getting for when they're eligible is not a lot, to put it diplomatically, and we typically get the same amount of notice as you, which is none. So if your card gets called or your priority gets reshuffled and they, for instance, if you're over 75. Today you learned you can try to sign up for vaccines this Wednesday. It would be beneficial if you had already had that conversation with your doctor so that you're not scrambling to try and get a hold of them with all their other patients on short notice, and then you may miss your opportunity to sign up. So Dottie, it's really good advice. Anyone who has any concerns. Again, mass.gov website has tons of good information on the safety and efficacy of these mRNA vaccines. And if you would rather speak to a medical professional, you should speak with your primary care provider. So vaccine, the vaccine plan in Massachusetts is broken into phases. The first phase, which is we are currently in. As of last week, the governor announced that all subgroups, if you look on the left of the screen, you'll see phase one in order of priority. All those subgroups listed there are eligible to go get the vaccine now. They would need to sign up. Using the Commonwealth's website, there is a tool to find vaccination centers. Again, at mass.gov/covidvaccine. So some more Eastern specific information, since we last met, Eastern successfully launched our first vaccine clinic for first responders. If you look here, bullet three, first responders EMS police fire, that is the clinic we stood up. We distributed all 80 doses of a Moderna vaccine, the first dose that we received from DPH to eligible first responders from Eastern and Stonehill College. Per Department of Health guidance, we also administered available doses to some Eastern Public School nurses and emergency and health personnel who were staffing and assisting to run that vaccine clinic. We were doing that in advance of the decision made on Thursday. Again, these things change nearly constantly. That kind of opened it up and said anyone in any subgroup of phase one can get a COVID vaccine at any state identified site. So the clinic went well. If Eastern receives any additional doses for during a phase one period, we will partner with area providers, you know, home-based healthcare workers, congregant care, long-term facilities to identify eligible recipients under the state's guidance and get those vaccines out. If you are under the phase one eligibility list you see here on the left of the screen, you haven't gotten a vaccine yet. Again, please visit the state's website. If you go to mass.gov/covidvaccine, you could find information about booking an appointment and going to a state available vaccine site. Which I believe, starting this week's began to include pharmacies and other providers.
Connor, do we know if if there is a or will be a site that folks can go to, not individuals, but but communities can go to to see that that who has in fact gotten, you know, gotten the the doses of the of the vaccine. I don't know if that is HIPAA HIPAA require, I'm not sure about the the efficacy of doing that.
Do you mean like a way to see what agencies have received how many vaccines?
Yes, I guess.
I don't know if that information is public. But the state does aggregate all state licensed vaccinator clinics that are public and makes those available. You know, we we the state gets very little notice from the federal government on how how many vaccines are getting. So I I doubt they have a public portal for who has how many. The standing guidance for DPH, which was reiterated again today is if you have doses, use them within 10 days. And if you are not going to use them within 10 days, we will redistribute them elsewhere. So I I just speaking from my own admittedly limited experience running our our first vaccine clinic. I I don't think the state would find it effective or useful to kind of make a map of here are where extra doses are. I think that you can deduce that though from the the map of here's where you can get an appointment. There the guidance to those to everyone is book appointments for every dose you have. And if you go to the map now, usually there's there's no appointment. So you have to kind of check very, very, very frequently because those things are getting booked up as soon as they're available. I don't know if that answers the question.
I will add that our legislative delegation took part in a letter by a number of legislators in the area from the South Coast and South Shore to to ask Governor Baker to start thinking about putting some other major testing, major vaccination sites because they're looking at Gillette and Fenway, but there's a real matter of equity for that to ask our seniors to get in the car and drive to Boston or Foxborough, particularly if you're in New Bedford or Taunton or someplace that's further away. And there's really nothing down the Cape or on the in the Ducksbury Plymouth Rockton kind of area either. And we're kind of in the middle of all of that. So hopefully they're looking at that to be able to stand up some major vaccination sites as as we can see, we these things, you know, they're working as as hard as they can, I'm sure on the state level, but all of a sudden you kind of get a pop up of a new place is being unveiled. So I hope they're I hope they're accelerating that and we're going to hear about some new places that are a little bit closer to us.
Yeah. And those are all good points. I'll have a little bit more on that and a couple of slides on what we're doing to prepare there. So phase one, our vaccine clinic for first responders went very well. Folks were happy to get in there. Dr. Crowley pictured here, Tim Bimossi, our Department of Infectious Control Officer. The chief, and you know, really everyone in the EMA and Fire Operation did a really great job. Health Director Kennedy, it went without a hitch and it was obviously good learning experience for us as well to prepare hopefully for larger, broader clinics for new groups as we move ahead. So talking about those groups and to the points, the good points you've all raised already. So today it was announced by Governor Baker that the first priority subgroup, so I put a red box around it on the left side of the screen in phase two, which is individuals who are 75 and above. They can begin seeking and receiving their COVID vaccines a week from today on Monday, February 1st. They cannot begin to attempt to book those appointments until Wednesday. And at some point on Wednesday, the Commonwealth's vaccine website will update. And residents who are 75 and older can begin to attempt to sign themselves up. You know, obviously to Dottie's point, there's some real, there's an equity challenge there. It it will, the demand is is going to be very high, I'm sure. And we'll, we'll have to see how that shakes out on the statewide level, but it will. You know, you there are currently the the larger mass vaccine sites that we've touched on, like Gillette. Fenway is being stood up. Some other bigger ones are being stood up, but those are very good points. That there's a health equity question about asking vulnerable populations to drive hours to get to a vaccine site. Particularly for a vaccine that requires two trips. So the governor's administration is working with pharmacy providers, grocery store providers to start expanding some smaller vaccine distributors in the coming weeks. But again, a lot of this information is just changing nearly by the day. So I really encourage everyone to go to that Massachusetts COVID website. If you are somebody or you care for somebody or you love somebody who is in one of these groups, you know, just kind of add it to your daily routine to check that and sign up for the the Commonwealth's COVID alerts so that you could stay on the ball and keep your eye on that. All other phases, all other subgroups in phase two, so that's individuals 65 and above. Individuals with two plus comorbidities. Early education, K to 12, grocery store, public works, et cetera. That's all still to be determined. So the only part of phase two that is eligible, starting Monday, February 1st is 75 and above. As of my presenting this, we do not, Eastern, we do not have doses on hand from the DPH to offer our own phase two clinic for residents over 75. However, we are committed to doing everything that we can to offer clinics to all eligible phases moving forward, provided that we can actually get the doses from DPH. I think I've said a few times tonight, this situation is pretty fluid. It changes a lot. So this could change. And when it does, we want to be able to notify people as soon as possible. And so to help with that, we have started maintaining a list with the health department. So if you are a resident of Eastern, again, or if you care for or love someone who's over 75, 75 or older. Or 65 or older, or you have two plus comorbidities. So basically anyone in that red box on the left of the screen, please call or email Eastern's COVID-19 hotline at 508-230-0783 or email at us at covid19@easton MA.us. And we will place you on our growing COVID-19 vaccine communication list. I probably need to come up with a more concise name for this. And we will use that in order to call folks and do email blasts for eligible subgroups as we move through this phasing, if and when we learn of any vaccine opportunities, including if we are not going to be the ones ourselves directly administering it, but there are area providers. We will share that with you as soon as we have it. So again, if you are in that those top two bullets, so you're 65 or above. We have multiple comorbidities that puts you at high risk for COVID and you want to be kind of first on the list to get the information from the town. When we get it, please call 508-230-0783 or email the covid19@easton MA.us email. We've put this information on the town's website. There's a news item on the front page with this information and it is also on our dedicated COVID page. So to anyone on the board or anyone watching, feel free to share it widely for folks. Again, we do not have vaccines in hand or commitment from DPH today. But that's not, I'm not criticizing DPH. This this phase two announcement happened four hours ago, roughly five hours ago. So hopefully that will change, but we're trying to pull, we've already started and we'll continue to pull a list together for folks who may qualify and we will stay in touch with you. Because it's our commitment to do everything we can to do our part. The other part of phase two. Also significant, education employees, transit, grocery utility, public works, public health. Again, all of those other subgroups, timing is to be determined. We do not know when that will be. We are nonetheless working to be as prepared as we can be. We're already in touch with providers or employers, you know, Eastern Public Schools, the Eastern Housing Authority to gather data on a level of need from which we can request dosage from the Department of Public Health. Just thought this brief graphic might be helpful. There is obviously limited doses available in Massachusetts and the United States. So it's a, it's a really, it's a multi-step process for us to offer a clinic. It's not as simple as a town saying, sure, we want to do it. And then we just have vaccines right away. We have to survey eligible populations of a front end to determine the interest level of subgroups who are able to get it. We need to do that to determine a quantity, basically to request through the Department of Public Health. If the Department of Public Health confirms and then delivers. If the Department of Public Health confirms and then delivers those requested doses, then we can schedule in pretty short order, having done it. And plan a clinic and send the necessary registration information to those getting vaccines. When they do get those vaccines, they receive the standard CDC. It's very low tech, but it, in theory, works. Where they get a little card that says their name, who gave them a shot, what type it was, Moderna or Pfizer, and when their follow-up period is. And then we'll be in touch with them for their second dose. So we are beginning the work and this week I anticipate we'll be sending survey tools to some of our partners to start getting that information in place. So we are ready if and when we get the call from public health on the state level to start ordering doses. So again, if you're a resident of Easton who's over 65, you have multiple comorbidities. Call the Council on Aging or email covid19@easton MA.us to get on our waitlist. And we will share vaccine opportunities with you as soon as we learn of them. In addition to what I just touched on, the emergency management team has been preparing for hopefully larger scale vaccine distributions in the future through other means as well. Since we last met, in addition to rolling out a first responder vaccine clinic, starting last Sunday, the Saturday before that on the 16th, we ran a community drive-through test site using all of our own personnel. It went very well. I was fortunate enough, I stopped by. The employees were doing a really great job. You see photo here of them all dawned up in their PPE. It was a great collaborative effort with Fire, Board of Health. We had folks from Police and DPW helping out. Had a pre-registration system put in place, did about 100 tests, took two to three days on average for a test turnaround from the lab. Test positive rate was about 7%. Our registration system functioned as designed, which is good. It worked. We received overall, very positive feedback from the residents who participated. The average time it took us to service a resident from pulling into the fire station, having their pre-registration and insurance information checked, swabbing and sending them on their way with a postcard that explained how they'll get their results was eight minutes. You know, we learned some good lessons from this, but primarily was that we were very conservative on the front end with how many appointments we booked. We could have increased the testing capacity with the existing personnel footprint that we had. Having done this and the vaccine clinic, the same weekend, obviously a very busy weekend, but we can kind of cross-pollinate those ideas. And use that for a scalable, flexible model for the emergency management team. For larger scale COVID-related events, including possibly vaccine emergency distribution sites. If we have the medical capability from getting the doses from DPH. Pre-registration proved to be very valuable. There was an extraordinarily high demand, we learned. It booked up and was unavailable pretty much, I think, within a few hours of it being announced. And we are still pending feedback on what our insurance reimburseables look like, which will have a significant impact on determining financial sustainability for doing this on a more routine basis. And again, the experience was extraordinarily valuable for our first responders, our health team and our administrators. So we could take this experience and build on that. Again, hopefully we're in a situation where we have doses that we need coming from DPH and we can put this experience to work for the public. Final note to say thank you to the emergency management team and our personnel. Also, last week was a busy week. This is why it feels like a long time for me since I last saw you. On Friday, Easton was recognized at the annual Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting. Specifically, we received, or the emergency management team. Received a award from Mass Municipal and the Massachusetts Inter-local Insurance Agency. For Risk Management Excellence in response to our COVID-19 planning, specifically recognizing Easton's excellence in both comprehensive. I wrote compressive, comprehensive community outreach and worker safety training relating to COVID-19. So I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Chief Partridge and Director Kennedy. Who've been instrumental in our ongoing work here and there's still plenty to do. And the full EMA executive team who have been in touch constantly for about a year straight now, which is Assistant Town Administrator Blanchard. Police Chief Sullivan and Deputy Chief Boone, Fire Deputy Carroll, DPW Director Field and Superintendent Dr. Cabral. Thanks to our personnel across our departments who have come together to protect their colleagues in the community. And thank you to the board and residents and business community in Easton for their continued resilience and support of ongoing emergency response here. That's what I have prepared. I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
So while the board is asking questions and making comments, I know we do have a few people in the attendees list. And if you have questions that you wanted to ask about the presentation, please put them in the Q and A with your name and your street address for our minutes. And we'll be happy to answer them. We'll get a pop-up with your questions. So anybody on the board, starting with you, Craig, any comments, questions?
I just want to thank Connor and Michael and the team for the work that they've done. The response to this pandemic and the continuing, continuing efforts to be ahead of the curve. And I, for one, am very appreciative of, of what you've done, Connor, and send that along to your entire staff.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would have taken a sip of water after all that as well, Connor. I just echo what Craig said. I think, Connor, thank you for doing this religiously and relentlessly. It can be very easy for all of us to get tired and to feel like we're just being repetitive. But the fact that you are and your team are keeping this at the forefront for us is greatly appreciated. And to Craig's point, I think that engagement and diligence creates opportunities for us to continue to get better and run tests like you've done or run clinics like you have. And it's just, it's appreciated. I think it's appropriate that you all get recognized because I think your leaders in this particular area. Not just for our community, but I would put you up against anybody in the state. I just think you folks are incredibly engaged and passionate and you, these updates are, while some folks might say, well, it'll always be on there. I think it's appropriate that it is. So.
I look forward to the day when it's not.
Agreed.
But we're not there yet.
Anyone else? Chuck or Mark?
Well, thank you to Connor, as the others have said, and the award-winning staff. In regard to that phone number, Connor, what are we, what are we to expect when we call? Is that like a push-button thing, select this for category that?
That's a great question. It is to our, within our budgetary abilities, which are strained under these circumstances. It is staffed during the town's business hours. But by an employee of Health and Community Services who also happens to be a member of our CERT team, which is great. If the phone is not answered, folks can just leave a message. It's for the Health Department. It won't be shared and just say, you know, I, here's my name. I'm interested in being put on the town's list, you know, name, age, address. And if the staff needs any additional information for our data, they will call them back.
Okay, so for example, speaking selfishly, myself being over 65. So anybody over 65 like myself could, could call and ask to be put on the list. Is that correct?
Yes, and we would get contact information from you, whatever you're, you're willing to give. Email is obviously the easiest because we can automate updates that way, but we know not every single person engages that way. So we'll get the information from you that is best for you to be communicated with and we will share with you. So for example, if a week from now, my team learns that we are, we are able to secure X amount of doses of Moderna. Which we are equipped to distribute for Phase Two recipients. We would contact folks on that list who are eligible and say, we are, we plan to stand a clinic up. Would you participate? If we hear from DPH, we are not receiving those doses, but we hear that there is, for example, a community partner. Either a healthcare provider, a pharmacy, a grocer in the area. That is much, you know, is more readily accessible from kind of a health equity concern, you know, rather than send people to Gillette. We could also inform people that way.
Thank you.
No problem.
The only comment is, well done and congratulations.
Thank you.
So I, I had the opportunity to stop by the COVID testing and the vaccinations and, you know, the, the staff that was there. We all know that they've just been working incredibly, you know, just in their regular jobs. But to be there on the weekends, everybody had a smile on their face. Everybody had their sleeves rolled up, you know, ready to go. It looked just like a well-oiled machine. Everybody knew what they were doing. It, you know, it looked so easy from my perspective because of all the work that went into it. But I do want to give a special shout out to the CERT team. You know, Easton has this community emergency response team of volunteers in the community that have been trained to help support our first responders for things like this. So they are the people that, you know, welcome you and get your information and give you the instructions. And, you know, they're, they're really, we're so lucky to have so many volunteers that are willing to do that. And again, with a smile, super excited to be a part of it. And I just love seeing them at, at the events that we go to and really want to give them a shout out and thank you. Because not every community has that CERT team. So I, I think we were one of the first that I heard of. There are more now, but they really are a very integral part of our emergency response team. So thank you. All right. And thank you, Connor, and congratulations. I love winning awards. Not that I'm very competitive, but I love to see Easton's name up on those awards every year.
Yes. Yeah, they, they made a special note to say that they've, like the Green Communities Program, had to consider basically disqualifying us. Because we've, it is not our first My Award to be humble.
Yep. All right. So next on the agenda is the opening of the annual town meeting warrant. It feels like we just did this. I, I feel like we're in a time warp this year. So we're looking at May 17th, which is the third Monday of May. And although that town meeting is typically at Oliver Ains High School. We are going to look to finalize a location. Would not finalize the location at this time to determine whether we're going to need to have it at Stonehill or how we're going to do that. So tonight, we're just going to be voting on opening the warrant and the, the time and the date. So anybody have any questions on that? Or Connor, did you want to add anything?
Just agreeing with you that it feels like yesterday.
So there's a motion in the packet. Craig, do you want to read that? Or am I putting you on the spot?
Put me on the spot. I don't think I have that one.
Okay, so I'll propose that the board vote to open the warrant for the annual town meeting with the closing date of Monday, February 22nd, 2021, F430 for the submission of warrant articles. So can I, I made the motion. Would somebody like to make a second?
Second, Barger.
Okay, full Janetti Barger and the vote.
Barger, yes.
Bruce, our guest.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. All right. And the, the last item on here is the ratification of the memorandums of agreement for fiscal year 2022.
Sure. So sent separately to the board in advanced meeting were three memorandums of agreement between the town. And three of our labor unions, the SPIA DPW unit, SPIA Water Division, and the Professional Administrative Employees Association. These are one-year contract extensions and a 1% cost of living in accordance with the board's directives. So I recommend that the board consider voting to ratify each of these agreements separately unless you have questions or concerns.
Questions or comments? I would just say that I really appreciate our, our town employees being so willing to come to agreements on this when we're in, you know, such, such turmoil. Just, you know, with, with trying to get through all of these tough issues. So the cooperation and the willingness to, to really participate and we, we really appreciate that. We're very grateful. So with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement for fiscal year 2022 for SPIA DPW unit. SPIA Water Division Unit and Professional Administrative Employees Association.
Separately, are you doing them all together or separately, Connor?
All right, Dottie, if it's okay, I would just ask that you do each of them one by one.
Okay. So, so the first one will be SPIA DPW unit and that's July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Bruce.
Barger, Bruce.
Barger, yes.
Bruce, our guest.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. The ratification of the SPIA Water Division Unit, July 20, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Second, Barger.
So, so moved, Bruce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bruce, Barger.
Barger, yes.
Bruce, our guest.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And the Professional Administrative Employees Association, also July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
At Tom.
So moved, Bruce.
Second, Barger.
Bruce, Barger.
Barger, yes.
Bruce, our guest.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
I thought you were just, Mr. Barger.
Sorry?
I thought you were just testing us on that, that second one.
Just want to make sure everyone's still paying attention.
Right.
So town administrator notes, anything else you want to add, Connor?
I have none.
And select board notes?
I'll make a note. A little update on the Easton outside campaign. A few weeks ago, we allocated money for economic development to use for an Easton outside campaign. And from the moment that occurred, I think everybody went to work. Economic development and all the people that are, you know, contributing their time, business owners. And it's really taken on a life of its own. You might see signs everywhere that say Easton outside. Really exciting. The videos that have been created by Neil Levine have gotten over 20,000 views. Fox 25 is actually interested in doing a story on it. We hope that local, the local newspaper will do a story on it. And, you know, there's further videos that will come out further explaining it now that we have people asking, you know, what is this all about? So there'll be explainer videos to, to get people to, you know, contribute to and support the local economy right here in Easton. So that money is, is being very well spent and I can't thank you enough. And, and this group of people is doing amazing things that no other town is doing. So thank you.
Well done, Mark.
Yeah, certainly. I've seen the, the posts pop up and I've actually seen some signs in my travels. It's great to see, Mark, honestly. Credit to economic.
I have to pass off all the credit to these guys. They're working so hard.
Thank you, Mark, for all the work you're doing with that and you really seem to be enjoying it.
It's exciting. And I'm sorry to bother you, Dottie, with all the emails. You, you, your inbox is probably flooded, but it's really exciting. You know, it's contagious what these guys are doing. So thank you.
It is very exciting and.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
No, I apologize, Dottie. I was just going to say, just keep, if there's more ideas and new ideas, even if it's not through this body, just ways to help support them. I was thinking buying some gift cards over the next, next few weeks, you know?
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Awesome.
It is. It's great. And, you know, it's great to see the Economic Development Council working so closely with the businesses and you're doing a tremendous job, Mark, leading that. So congratulations and thank you for all the effort on that. So all good. All right. Well, if nobody else has anything, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Bruce.
Barger, yes.
Bruce, our guest.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night and make sure.
Stay safe, everybody.
Keep washing your hands, wear your masks. And like you said, Craig, be safe.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.